I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get started, I'd like to welcome the press here, Danielle, I can't remember your last name Danielle.
Jester.
Give us a little bit of overview, how you got Lake County if you don't mind.
So I previously worked for the Siskiyou Daily News in Wayrica where I grew up. And in February, I started working at the Herald and News in Klamath Falls. And actually, when I started at the Herald and News, they told me that it was kind of a two job offers in one kind of deal, and they eventually wanted me to come over here, so. Yeah, this has been in the plan, in the works for a while. I was supposed to start May first, but with COVID and everything, I kind of put that on the back burner, but here I am, so, yeah.
Well, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. So additions or deletions to the agenda this time?
I have three additions. I have one MOU Klamath County juvenile and Lake County. And one MOU between Klamath County Sheriff and Lake County and petition for order does in the newspaper.
Okay. Any additions or changes from the board?
Not from me, other than just a quick update on Silver Lake.
Okay. So our first order of business, nine o'clock pre-trial probation for old supervision. Brief week proclamation. Jake, did you want to say anything before I done this proclamation?
Just next week is Supervision Appreciation Week. Typically, we need to host a lipstick meeting during the week and have a luncheon. Unfortunately, with COVID, we're not having a lipstick meeting. I'm not quite sure, pretty technically challenged when it comes to trying to set up a Zoom meeting. So I'll probably draft a memo or a letter or just kind of put some information together and send it out over email, so everybody has, so we have something going on. Otherwise, another year down from last year's celebration. And the work is, the work to do is still, what the staff do is still to bring their day to the table every day. So, and appreciate it, our work's appreciated. I'd ask for you to read the proclamation if you would.
I have it here, it's a great honor. Before I read it, a little bit of history. Lake County today were there as the adult juvenile society probation. For many years, Lake County contracted out to have Klamath County be the supervisor for adult probation. So we had a director that worked remotely, we had just two PO officers. Today, we have three PO officers, we have community servants, we have staff at the front where we're at today. And the services that we've got in Lake County are double of what they used to be. But we reorganized and everything. Then that was a lot of pride. There will be future reorganizations, I'm sure, as we grow in juvenile and adult both sides, but we are leaps and bounds further than what we were just a few years ago. Okay, thank you for coming forward with that transition. So with that, I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas, Lake County Community Justice is an essential part of the justice system. And whereas, Lake County Community Justice Professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity. And whereas, Lake County Community Justice Professionals are responsible for supervising adult and juvenile offenders in the community. And whereas, Lake County Community Justice Professionals are trained professionals trained professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders. And whereas, Lake County Community Justice Professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups. And whereas, Lake County Community Justice Professionals promote prevention intervention in the house of consumers. And whereas, Lake County Community Justice Professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims. And whereas, Lake County Community Justice Professionals provide services, support, and protection. Uh, read it twice. You got it twice as good as that one. Lake County Community Justice Professionals advocate community and historic justice. And whereas, Lake County Community Justice Professionals are a true force for positive change. That's highlighted, I think, in their communities. And now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Lake County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim July 19th, through the 25th, 2020, as a pre-trial probation role supervision week. And encourage all citizens to honor these community justice professionals and to recognize their achievements. Thank you so much, everybody, appreciate it. Sorry, I reread the same one again, it's a little tough, I'm trying to stay on task here, but. My thoughts and my comments are very sincere for the rest of the day. And the services to our community, a lot of people don't realize because you guys are very quiet and just get things done. But having a service out there is very important to the people. I think your case load, what is it, 130 plus right now? Right now, that number?
You're 320.
Yeah, but people on felony probation. And we built up to only, and we still only have three PO officers to do, supervise that for the people. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And buddy, thank you for your service.
I just come to support these guys.
Absolutely, and you're part of that group, you
No, no, no.
You worked in there, thank you for your service too. Would anybody like to say anything? Did it?
Okay. I think besides what you guys do for the community, you guys are such good teammates to the rest of us. If there's other divisions that need something, you're quick to jump in and help out. You guys helped out with our boards and laminating, and I can't imagine the building without you guys in it. Thank you.
All of you.
Alright.
Janitor services.
Dave threw us under the bus for the bathrooms.
Is now a good time for me to bring up taking on a second position here at the county? I'll start doing the janitorial services during the day.
Don't move. How do you like that, Tori?
That's on the record.
Change your job description, what do you think?
I'll do that.
That means there's a cut in pay because janitorial pays less, she just accepted that in a public meeting. Four hours, Dave done four hours.
See, I'm the giver.
Just done the proclamation. Alright, we better move on because
Okay.
Losing my order here, I feel.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, 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 appreciate it. Stay safe out there, please do, thank you. Okay, Kevin Hawk, we're gonna move his right up on the greater rebuild for the road department.
I think Kevin may have just joined the call. Kevin, are you on the line?
Serving and protecting.
Yes, I'm on the line.
Awesome, thank you.
Good morning, Kevin. So
Morning.
We have the greater rebuild quotes, I reviewed them and everything, but you wanna give a little bit of an overview? And we will make the decision tomorrow naturally, today's work session.
Did you think, give you guys an overview?
Yeah, yeah, if you want, I guess, is what Commissioner Leonard was asking.
Okay, so we have two graders that are in need of some rebuild. The two options that are in front of you, option one is, I think 106,000 and change. Trying to find the number.
Yeah.
And option two is 67. It'll, both graders eventually will end up being a combination of those two. Because some of which mechanically, we won't be able to see until we get down into the machine and see what it needs. And so that's why we did two options there, and CAP is in agreement that we'll work together as we get into the machine to see what all needs rebuilt. But for approvals sake, for this discussion of these two machines, not to exceed the option number one quote, which is
It's 106,000.
$159.50.
Yeah, very good, Kevin. So you presented some of this, then we're finally there, where we're gonna get it done. What kind of, and I'm trying to read through yours, probably in here. What kind of warranty comes with refurbished or anything? Do we get like one year on certain parts or anything?
One year, there's one year on certain parts. There's one year on the labor. And then some of the engine parts, it's not, it's not on here, I can get you that information. It is a different time period, it might be two years on some of the parts in the engine.
So that's very good news, whatever you, we're able to refurbish these graders. And probably, even if it's a higher amount, about one-third of the cost of a new one, am I close on that?
Oh yeah, one-third, and that's, you know, we demoed some machines late last fall and early this spring. I think the, I think the cheapest machine that we demoed was 380,000.
Yeah.
And for the county's sake, and it's worth noting, these graders that we have in our system, in our fleet, as far as the chassis is concerned, we, this is the best economic value for us, is just to rebuild the mechanics of it. These graders otherwise structurally are in reasonable good condition.
I'm good, Kevin, you've answered my questions, I appreciate you being able to call in this morning. Are there any questions from the board?
No, I, Kevin and I spoke earlier, he answered all my questions and just clarifying some of issues on, you know, having the two different quotes and the two different prices and having the warranty, I think I'm, I'm good on everything, I'm ready to go forward.
Alright, Kevin, we'll, like I said, today's work session, tomorrow we'll do our motions and seconded, but thank you for being here by phone and move forward.
If I may.
Sure.
If I may ask one question, so this quote is for one machine? We'd like to do two in this fiscal year. Do you want me to bring the second quote back at that time, or can we do approval for not to exceed two separate machines?
Okay, so I was taking it as, whenever you talk there, this for both machines, no, there's one, one machine. So are we, so is the quote good for both machines?
The quote is for one machine, we'd like to do two machines, so the per machine, it would be not to exceed 106,000. If we're, if we're approving for both machines in this fiscal year, then we'd have to add that, we'd have to add that together and be 112. Or 212 and whatever that number is for two machines.
Yeah, let's, just, just get that paperwork to us, we might as well do them both. Where you're at.
Well, do we need the paperwork though, being that it's just a quote for doing one machine, we just basically approved it for two machines?
As long as we have a note that they stand behind the quote.
For both machines.
For both machines, sometimes if you're doing two, they might even give it a little bit of a break, but Kevin, negotiate with them, and if that quote's good for two machines, then we'll do two machines.
Yeah, they, they're aware that we'd like to do two machines, if you look on, it'd be the page right up to the agenda sheet. It says unit number, this one is specific for 31. The other machine that we're gonna rebuild is the same model, or I should say that we'd like to rebuild is the same model, so all of ours are identical.
Technically, we're really wanting to, you know, in the rebuild, we could be as cheap as the 67,000. We just want, once you get into the machine though, you're going to find other things, and if they're needing more of a rebuild and more parts, that's when you end up with a secondary quote, because it's a much larger rebuild. And
Correct, correct, that's how we ended up at 106. When we sat down with them and went through all of the potential contingencies, I guess, this is, that's the number that collectively we came up with, was the 106,000 to the worst case scenario.
Yeah, Kevin, when I, when I read your summary, it says, road department has two graders, so maybe I did read far enough. I thought we had to approve 106 per grader for two graders. And so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. If you need to confirm that quote is good for two graders with with CAP, with Peterson CAP, or if they're aware and they're good with that quote being for two graders, 106 per grader, I'm good.
That's, that's what, you just summarized it, that's what it would be, they're, then they're aware, we talked about two.
Okay, not a problem, then we have enough to, we can make that in our motion tomorrow.
Yep, sounds good.
Alright, anything else?
Okay. Nope, thank you.
Alright, thank you, we'll move on the agenda. Mr. Berman, sir. We have airport engineering agreement, this is just, while they take away, it's just
Well, we approved, we approved the engineering service three months ago, four months ago, whatever it was. And then we just now got the green consulting service agreement together. And they came before me last week, and I just need to get approved and your signature, and Bailey's looked at it, and I bet it looks good, so.
Yeah, this is the actual agreement, it's just the signature of the agreement, everything's been done, we're just doing housekeeping.
Correct.
Alright, thank you very much, for, unless, Jay, I'm sorry, no, I'm good, I didn't have any questions on it. We're just, they have to go through the meetings for the minutes.
There we go.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Greer, MOU between Klamath County Juvenile and Lake County.
So juvenile MOU, that's where detention beds, as in years past, we went 220 bed days a year. At 55 bed days a quarter. And we pay, we pay whether we have a, utilize the beds or not. Because that guarantees a bed whenever we need one. It's worked out well, Mr. Dan Golden, the juvenile director in Klamath County, and I communicate on a regular basis and check in. We're always welcome, there are a lot of groups over there when we need to, morning, noon, or night, they've been open. With COVID, they're a little more reluctant because they haven't, they haven't yet to tell us, no. So they understand our needs and we appreciate them, and we're working relationship. So the cost hasn't changed for the last couple of years. I believe it's $110 a day. I don't have, I'm trying to make, probably before, so. But I think the total cost is 24,200, and I believe I budgeted about 26,000 in case we have a little more, if we have someone in there for more than 55 days, they go us $110 a day. So that's on top of our normal 55 bed days, so there's a little bit of wiggle room in there.
And that's 55 days per quarter.
55 days per quarter, yes, sir. And if there's a hole that we don't know how, how to fill it, how much, how much to fill it in with, is the juvenile flying out of within our county budget, because in years past, we've been pretty flat, stayed within our needs. And then unpredictable behavior hits us, and we have two or three kids in there, and they're 11 crimes, and we both pay. I mean, we've had to pay more than what we've got to do, so.
This is one of the places where contingency can come in, and I've seen it over the years. If you have juvenile, you end up in detention for a fixed amount of time and everything. And we have, I think one time we went over substantially. And you have no control of that, once the kid gets in the system. Which is, for the most part, for the average adult, it's been very fortunate to have this.
We've been very fortunate. And kudos to my juvenile staff. We work really hard to come up with Plan B, and to get them out of detention plan A, is keep them in detention plan B, is giving them back in the community, back home, back somewhere where they're safe. They're being held accountable. And there's some services that we can start providing early on. So we work really hard at trying to streamline and get them out of detention. Oftentimes, the home, home life isn't, isn't where it needs to be, and we can't guarantee that they're gonna be safe and be held accountable in the home, so oftentimes, detentions are not deserved, but we do it.
Any questions? Okay, you're up again with the MOU between Klamath County Sheriff and Lake County. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, that's our adult MOU, Klamath County Sheriff's Office. What that does is allows us to rent 730 bed days a year, which is essentially two bed days two beds a day for a year. We can have three people over there, a couple of years ago, two years ago, three years ago, we changed it, we modified it a little bit to allow special populations, females, historically, it was just male populations that we were able to house over there. We've got that changed with some conversation between our jail manager and the Klamath County Jail manager. We're able to house special interests such as sex offenders or Christian, Christian crimes, and also females. But they have that room for those folks over there, because they need their own space, or they get their own space. However, with general population folks, they can put them, they can plug them right in, so. It's been a great working relationship, Sheriff Caper and jail, the jail commander, Brian Bryson. We communicate on a regular basis. Sergeant Goldberg and the Sheriff, they also communicate back and forth to make sure we're utilizing our beds. We've never gone over our beds, and they've never pulled us out, they can't house anybody over there, so it's been a great relationship. Although, community corrections pays for it, it's like delegate whoever uses that bed to the sheriff's office, I don't need to take pay who goes over there, that's the sheriff's office, the jail provision to do that. So, and the basis of that is using our $1045, which is incorporated in our budget. And those folks, the probation if revoked, instead of going to prison, they use their time in the county jail, and those are usually anywhere from 60 days to 11 months sentences. Those stay right here in the county, so we don't plug up our small jail, we'll send, the jail will send those over to Klamath County. And they'll use their time in Klamath County, which also benefits our clients, because they do have a treatment program in the facility over there, at a client's needs agent. They have some work that can be inmate workers to reduce some of their sentences. So there's some benefits to having a couple of those long-term folks over Klamath, as opposed to here, probably in this area.
This has been one of the best things for using as the tool for management of our population in our jail. Whenever we, we have, I did 18 beds here, and we have some pretty unique situations of it can be anywhere from family members to people that don't get along, they have to separate. It's hard to do, so having this tool and having the dollars that come from your department to have this tool available for the sheriff's side, very much appreciate it, it's been a great tool over here.
And it's been a pretty solid working relationship as well.
Questions?
Just one. Just a point of curiosity, is the 61,000, and this goes over to the other MOU as well? For juvenile, the 24,200, is that, are those dollars expended immediately? Or are they paid on a contract basis, or do we, do we spend those dollars based on usage?
With, I don't know.
With both of those?
They bill me and we pay them.
Okay.
Whether we have someone over there or not, because they, they have budget trenches as well, so they rely on that money. So it's two, they rely on the money, we rely on the beds. So it's almost, we're guaranteed beds, we're guaranteed two beds, we can get away with having three people over one time in the adult jail.
Right.
We can have, we've had as many as three over in detention, all the time. And that's, it's unfortunate, but it was, it was it was great that Klamath County was able to, detention was able to work with us on that.
Yeah, I just, it was just a point of curiosity on my part, because like you had said, that we'd never really been told no, and we've never been able to, we've never gotten to the point where we use both beds or whatever, we haven't reached that capacity, I guess is what it's kind of sounds like, but we're still paying the 61,000.
We use our beds, we use our beds every year. That's, in the adult jail, we use our beds every year, that's not for that dollar, we can use our beds. There's no question about that. Because although we may not have some
We get all of our money's worth out.
We get our, we get the most bankrupt buck out of those guys on the planet. Because oftentimes, we'll get some unruly inmates upstairs in jail, and separated, we'll send someone over there, even for two weeks. But we have, we have people coming and going, right?
And then you said that, of course, we'd use three beds at a time, even, even though we contract with them too.
The situation and the population. It's been a great working relationship in the year. I, we talked about, I talked about, you know, pay for flight, pay for flight, so if you pay for it, you don't need to pay for it.
Right.
And there would be zero guarantee.
Right.
I'm not willing to take that chance.
Yeah.
If I could, if I could, I'd be okay right now, I'm not willing to take that chance. In the future, we may, when it first came, we only had one bed, we paid $30,500. We had a need at the time for two beds, so we bumped it up. I've had conversations with Sheriff Caper and Lieutenant Bryson, and let him know that depending on how bad it's going in the future, we may have to cut back to one, but we're not gonna go, we're not gonna go zero. But that's gonna be our last resort, because I know the benefit not only to my staff for sanction purposes, by far, as well.
So when you, if I remember right, whenever we went to the pay the play theory, it cost us, it cost us more money.
Absolutely.
Because we went through all that, it was pretty tough negotiations at one time, I think, and thank you for that. Other questions?
Oh, I'm good, thank you.
Alright. I think I've got what you take. Looks like we're right at the time, so Melanie, you have everybody online?
Yep.
Okay, the time is right, 9:30. Darwin, do you wanna come up to the front?
Uh, yeah, just, just in case.
Yeah, okay, so our
Not really, but we're sure that you'll have it on.
Our 9:30, Archway Solar Energy Facility and Origin Energy Facility site council review process. And with that, Darwin, did you have any, give any little bit of an overview or anything, or you gonna just go right into it?
No, we, I'll just say that we've done this before, a couple of years back. Department of Energy and the AppSec folks were able to give us a just brief overview of the two projects at that time that were being presented to the county. I'm sitting in solar center and then the Blue Mile project, and I'm sitting in Still Moon Florida. I'd like to hear an update from Department of Energy, I'd use to go short and speak, but about the Blue Mile project, but this is a long process, and they'll go over their process and our role and involvement in it. I have some of the documents that have come through already, and for getting involved more in this process. It is something I've been aware for at least a, probably half a year of this project coming, I think, works, but definitely something that might be good to know now.
Yeah, okay.
Relevant.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is, if we have friends online or phone or power or work in Zoom, I'd like to have some introductions, but we know too long first. Let's start, is the lead, is it Maxwell Woods, are you the lead?
Yeah, hi, thank you very much. Is hearing me okay in the room?
Yeah.
Alright, great, hi, my name is Maxwell Woods, I am the senior advisor to Oregon Department of Energy Facilities.
So you're breaking up a little bit, so if there's somebody else that's not muted So if there's somebody else that's not muted, whenever somebody's talking, it will give us feedback. So if you're not talking, please mute. Thank you, go ahead, Max.
Okay. Is that any better?
Yeah.
Is that, can I, can I carry on?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, thank you very much. And I appreciate the opportunity and as Darwin meant, uh, probably the two, three years, my colleagues and my up in that rhythm, uh, talking at Solar Center Department Project. And today we come back to you for filling a little bit different scenario, um, to talk about two proposed projects in Lake. Uh, I know you asked for introduction, but I will, I will pause for a second today. I know that on the line right now is a representative of the developer, Laura Minor. And I'll let Laura introduce.
Yes, hi, good morning. This is Laura Minor, uh, developer for Archway. I work with If Energy, the, the company sponsoring the project. Good morning, sorry, I can't be with you in person there. I, I'm based here at Portlet.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I have a few slides, um, uh, to go through and then Laura has a few about the project details. Um, but we can keep it as informal as you want or as formal as you want. I, I, you know, these sort of informational slides, as much as anything, they're for takeaways for the commissioners and for Darwin. Just some very basic high overview stuff, but, um, I'll just carry on and please feel free to stop and ask questions, whatever you, whatever you wish. And actually, I would start Darwin, thank you for the opportunity. I would pick guys, you asked about the blue one. Um, it is, so I say it's not made that. Um, I don't know details. They have never filed a complaint with us. It also not the broad that, um, that is, and. So I have not had a lot of communication with them, but it is, um, uh, I know, hopefully.
Max, it's Brad Winters. You're breaking up really bad for us to understand you here.
Okay. Christie, uh, I'm sorry. Melanie, you want me to pop in on the phone line?
Uh, yeah, give us a second. We'll see if we can figure that out.
I apologize.
No, no, no need to apologize. We apologize. I, I knew I was having trouble, but when I looked around, other people's having trouble, I thought I better try to get a little clearer for people.
Yeah, no problem.
Right there, you sound good.
Well, maybe I can just pop lower if my computer will pick up my audio. Okay. Um, oh, the first slide here, just our introduction slide. Um, you will also be here, just one note. You'll hear from my colleague, Sarah Esterson. Her name is listed on the slide. Um, she's not with us today, but she will be a component of my team when I rework on the review. So you'll probably hear from her and Darwin's worked with her before, hopefully. Anyway, Melanie, you can go to the, I, I.
We're working on it, Max.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're experiencing technical difficulties at the moment. Are we on? We're just, we're just lighting up the network here. The host called and we can have other people sign. This is waiting for the network. Oh, really? Uh, yeah, whatever you had to talk about. I think talking a little lower, actually, that was very, that was working.
If I talked a little lower and a little lower, is that kind of okay?
Yeah. All right.
Okay, well, let's see what we can do. All right, uh, Melanie, just shoot an email with the phone number. We do want to try that in a second, but we'll carry it. Just give me a second. Uh, I can speed up. So I have a couple of slides here, there's two about the project itself, because it's always interesting to, and the reason we're talking about it, it's about the, so I said this as an actual project. So I wanted to start off with the information about the project itself. Knowing that Laura will also have a few slides at the end to talk more about this. So proposed projects, uh, as Darwin, I'm like, you're aware of it already, but it's, uh, about the project, North Lake County, east of Christmas Valley. Uh, it is east of the Obsidian Project, Darwin, you mentioned the other project out there, but east of, of Lake of Obsidian. And the app is, is solar inner and it's for a company called Solar Development. And that, yeah, I said. The next slide, a little over that, um, kind of very, I, locational. That one's on, as the, uh, the, the purple lines are high voltage power lines that run through the north part of the county. And the green, uh, look fully out there, that site. And that's the Christmas Valley Highway that's just south of, uh, highway. How's, how's the app yet?
It's, it's doing okay so far.
Okay. Melanie, if you want to.
Uh, say that again, sorry, it just blacked out. Oh, next slide.
The next slide. Uh, this is just a, this is a slide that does the definition when we, as, as board in Department of Energy and the energy was, uh, getting involved, but it's, we, this will review of that. There's a statutory definition, uh, uh, about the jurisdictional thresholds for when the state has a permitting authority or when the county is permitting. Uh, I highlighted just two more. Of course, the solar heat thresholds, talking about our. Then also, it often comes up, and about interstate, which I know is really high line, uh, down in Southern Lake County. Uh, first, the federal government's protection over up, uh, for most. So, uh, that goes forward.
We can go on the phone.
Yeah, yeah, would you, uh, Max, would you call in now? We have the phone up.
You bet. Melanie, I'll call the number you just sent to me.
Thank you.
Go.
Yeah.
All righty. All right, let's give that a try, Max.
Okay, now how is that quality? That audio sound okay?
You're giving feedback, is your other, uh, one on still?
Probably ours.
Oh, wow. That's a lot of feedback, why is that? Oh, my goodness. The, the, the new, the new age of technology, I swear, this is all. I'm not sure what to do. Commissioner Winters, if you, are you coming?
Well, I, I was going to be sort of outlined.
Well, I want to be respectful of, you know, your hearing.
Yeah, but my hearing, uh, obviously, the phone isn't working, so.
Okay. So we'll just hang, hang.
Hang up the phone, let's go back the other way, Max.
All right.
Talk, talk slow and direct, let's see if we can get through this.
All right, yeah, right.
Sorry for the technical difficulty.
All right, Brad, uh, uh, don't you leave.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
And don't, don't feel, uh, bad at all. It's, it's mostly a technology on our end, I think, so no worries at all. Thank you for the patience.
Well, this modern world. Okay, uh, so I just have this slide here about the prescription for the, the state permitting. Uh, by the way, and I have another slide here, I work for their energy, but the authority final decision is the Energy Facility Siting Council. They're of all of the board and I have a, I'll talk about them in a sec, just over. So I, I'm staff now. I tend to use those, but I work for FSEG as a different. The solar threshold, uh, for, uh, depend on the type of that they are proposed on. So you can see that, uh, at a high value farm land, it's only a hundred and sixty acres on the state prescription, but all the way up to nine hundred twenty acres on quotes upper limit. That's what the statute said. And that is, uh, a likely yard space for the project. And there's a middle tier there cultivated land where it's soil plasticity. Does, do I have any questions on that?
No, go ahead.
All right, thank you. You know, our other project, if you tend to regulate a natural gas power, uh, large, into the northern part of this, those tend to be up there. Uh, but in, in Lake County, we now have, um, three solar projects that have been proposed, of course, that come through our jurisdiction. All right, the next slide, slide five. This is just a wrap up of the, the key components or program. Uh, the primary objective I, I, I like there is our very first point is we do really one thing. We review large scale energy facility applications and then monitor compliance with the terms and conditions of our permits that we issue once those projects are built. That's about it. So we're a very specialized shop. We have eleven employees in my division. Uh, we have the, like I said, the, the council itself is seven members, volunteers. And so the, uh, actual decision maker, uh, body is that council there. Um, a few other notes here, the reason I, I sort of queuing this up for my next slide is we work closely, even though the state government makes a decision on the projects, we work very closely with, uh, local governments, other state agencies, tribal governments where the tribes have an interest, uh, and occasionally the federal government, uh, if there's a federal connection with some of these projects, which occasionally there is. So Lake County, the reason I wanted to come specifically today, this week, uh, to talk to you is because as the local government in which the project, the Archway project appears, you are the special advisory group. And that term is defined in statute. And next week, I, the, our council, the Energy Facility Siting Council, will be formally designating the Lake County Commissioners as the special advisory group for the Archway project. Uh, that, I have enough, my next slide talks about that, what that means exactly. But yesterday, my colleague Sarah sent an email with some attachments to the commissioners and to Darwin. Uh, one of those attachments was a letter basically introducing, you know, our, our process and talking about the, uh, council's appointment at, at next week's meeting, uh, of the special advisory group of the county government. So Melanie, if you want to go on to the next slide, slide six. And this talks about the role of this special advisory group. Uh, just a couple of high level points here. Uh, what we request of the special advisory group is a couple of things. Uh, and typically, as I should say this, typically, uh, special advisory groups, um, rely upon their county planning directors, planning staff to handle these requests on their behalf. It doesn't have to be that way, but that's the typical, um, setup as we see. And hence, we've worked closely with Darwin on the Obsidian Solar Center, for example. Uh, um, on the behalf of the special advisory group, of course, the planning department itself has interests in the project, particularly compliance with land use, uh, codes and criteria. Uh, but any other issues that are of concern or regard to the county government, uh, you let us know about those. Um, basically, this how typically works through letters that are submitted on the record at certain time periods, uh, in the process. The first two bullets, local applicable substantive criteria, that's a fancy term for the land use code and other particular, uh, if there are any other regulations about solar facilities that the county has established that apply to this project, you let us know about those and discuss how the project would comply with those criteria. So that's really all I wanted to mention on this slide. And I think we're fortunate that we have a relationship with Lake County and with you, Darwin, uh, through our work on the other projects. So this is, we're not new here in Lake County and I appreciate that we've, uh, had a good relationship over the last few years working on our, uh, the other projects. And so, um, when we come out, do these types of presentations, when we send you demos, um, I know that we have, it's not brand new. So sometimes we get a project in the county where we have to work, we have to do to start from the beginning, but we're not doing that here, so that's nice.
So, so Max, this is Brad. Um, the other paperwork that comes through, excuse me, um, we need to, um, I would assume the court, they'll probably do this, designate our planning director as the contact person speaking on the.
You do, yeah, that's right. That's one of the official actions and that was, that's actually, it's funny, there was an Oregon Supreme Court decision that, that, uh, requires that the county government formally designate the planner to speak on their behalf, should, if they choose to do so. Uh, and I think that's as simple as in your letter back to us, you simply state, we designate Darwin Johnson as the, um, a point of contact or, you know, communication with the Lake County Board of Commissioners, something like that. And that's good enough for us, but that doesn't need to refer to us. Uh, okay, slide seven is, um, little colored boxes and a little flow chart here. Darwin, you wrote with the remarks, you mentioned the law process. It is, I, I, I can't deny that. Um, where at the very first step, and I put a little red box around the, uh, notice of intent, that's the very first step of the process. The Archway project submitted a notice of intent at the end of June. Uh, that document is on our website and I think we sent you the link in the email yesterday. It's really just a summary of what the project would entail and some high level, uh, discussion points about potential environmental issues at the site and a few other details in the notes that's been sent. The main documentation is, is the application, uh, that third little chevron, uh, the application for site certificate, that's the term of the, of a major document that comes in. Uh, Laura has told me that around October is when she expects to submit the application. Those are pretty hefty documents and Darwin, you can probably attest from the Obsidian documentation, they're lengthy. A lot of technical studies, uh, environmental studies that are submitted, uh, as part of the application. And we do our review of that document, uh, and ultimately the, the staff, my staff, issues the draft proposed order, which is our recommended findings of facts and conclusion of law, goes out for a public comment period. Um, we ultimately issue a proposed order and then at the very last stage, we get to a final order and site certificate. That's the decision by the council, by our council, the Energy Facility Siting Council. There's a few process, key process steps along the way, I'll highlight the gray boxes where we coordinate closest agency coordination. Um, that would include the special advisory group, Lake County Courts, uh, Board of Commissioners and Planning Department. We're working through any potential issues and compliance with, um, your land use criteria or any other, uh, issues of concern you may have. So that's, uh, there's process steps predefined in our, in our review when we specifically coordinate and look for support and input from your soul. So that's, uh, there's process steps, predefined in our, in our review, when we specifically coordinate and look for support and input from your soul. Okay, the next slide, slide eight. Uh, is really what I just talked about, this is just a, a summary of when, I won't read every word in this slide, it's a little boring. Uh, the, 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 the process steps, when we will work specifically with the county and request your input and review. The very first one, uh, which says prior to receiving the application, NOI, notice of intent, that's the phase we're in right now. Uh, and so, with, actually, next week, we will be sending another formal letter to you, which kicks off the, um, a request for specific agency statutes and rules, applicable statutes and rules, mostly land use criteria in your case. But if there's anything else of issue you wanna bring up, that's fine. Uh, we also have a public comment period that will start next week on the notice of intent, uh, with a similar, um, I should say scope, that if there's members of the public who have potential issues or knowledge about the area, they wish to share with us, they can do so, so that'll start next week. Okay, um, slide nine. This is really a very, just a quick point to let you know that, uh, working with us is typically cost recoverable. So we have, uh, uh, through our process allow that, we have contract, we have a contract with Lake County, and that time spent by your staff working on our review, uh, should you choose to, to see cost recovery, you may do so. Uh, and if you have questions about that, Darwin, just let me know, I, I'm not the fiscal person, but I have a person that I can connect you with if you have questions on that process. My last slide is, is slide ten, uh, is really just some information, I won't click on these links, this is just takeaway for, uh, for the commissioners there. You can, there's multiple ways to find more information, you can look at our, uh, we have notices, you can sign up for notices. It's called Click Dimensions, that's just the name of the software company that manages this for us. Um, we have a map, an online KIS mapping tool, that's the first link, and the archway project is up there now, we just put that up yesterday. You can see the facilities that come under EFC jurisdiction on that map. And then there's just a link to our website and a monthly update, a general update that we send out, should you choose to sign up for those, you can do so. And that's my presentation, the last slide I had is simply questions, so if there's any questions about process, about, uh, what I do and how we do it, I'd be glad to field them, uh, if not, Laura will be able to present a few facts about the project itself, uh, on her slideshow, and about her company.
So, so yes, uh, there, at least I do have questions, like, like the other ones. So, uh, you do, when you went through the citing process, starting from the NOI today or whatever.
Yep.
And once the application is absolutely in, you don't give no timeframes of anything that says this will be decided by this amount of time, is it one year, two years, is there extensions, how fast does it get through the EFC process?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question, um, by, by statutory requirement, by the time the applicant, this is, this, I think it somewhat mirrors the land use process, where we have to find the application complete. So once they submit the application, it's still a preliminary application, so we deem it complete. That, the completeness itself can take a few months, if there are, uh, questions, outstanding information, typically, uh, those would be around, uh, maybe some survey data was incomplete, or, or there are just questions about an application. But once it's deemed complete, we have one year to make a complete, to make a final decision on an application. Now, the caveat is that can be extended, um, so it, it, it can go on, um, if there is opposition to a project, if they contested, the second to last Chevron here is contested case. If the contested case is awfully contested, shall we say, that can drag out for a while, um. The, we, we can, we did, we did a review for a project, uh, earlier this year, that was about, I think it was four months from complete application to final decision, that was in Wasco County. Um, so if there's, uh, a little opposition and a smooth project, it can go within a few months, but frankly, that was about as fast as uh, we could make it happen. I don't know about the archway project, very beginning, it's hard to say, we endeavor to do our best and to stick to that one year statutory timeline. Um, but like I said, it's, uh, these tend to be large projects, and if there is controversy, or if there is, um, opposition, you can understand why that may slow down the process.
Yes, thank you, I, I just want to make sure that was basically.
You bet, absolutely, yeah, you're right, and, and frankly, this slide doesn't have those timelines on them, because it is, it does tend to be variable, um, depending on the project, the location, uh, if there are issues of concern, you know, neighbors who may not like a project, things like that nature. But we do tend, we try to be as efficient, that's one of our goals, to be as efficient as we can. Of course.
So my next is not a question, it's a comment, um, as a special advisory group, um, and only been through this one time, and that one's still in process, but as a special advisory group, and once you've met the criteria and everything from us as a special advisory group, what I would like to see, and this is a comment, this is for EFC, to stay a little bit more engaged with the county and the special advisory group as it's going through the process.
Okay.
So, that, that seems to have been some struggles for us here, um, we probably don't really catch everything that comes through, but it might take a little extra, just a shot at our director, or planning director and the commissioners, just so that we're, um, we stay involved more, at, at least not in knowledge.
I, I agree with that, absolutely.
That's my question, comment.
Uh, quick question, when does the public, uh, comment period begin, and where does it end, what, what timeframe do you have the public comment, and what's the format that people are able to give a public comment?
Uh, good question, so there's two, there's two defined public comment periods in the process. The first is, uh, on this notice of intent, it's very beginning phase, and that'll start next week, when we issue public notice, um, of the application, I'm sorry, of the notice of intent. That will probably be around thirty days, maybe forty days, uh, then this is the very beginning, the notice of intent public comment period, um, there's not a lot to comment on, it's really, the intention is that, um, if the public or other state agencies or local governments know of anything in particular that should be studied in the application, that's the, the idea that we would like to receive at that time, for example, um, we may receive a, a comment from, uh, a Native American tribe about a cultural resource that nobody knows about except the tribe, uh, and if they brought that up or review, we might take that into consideration, just, just as an example. The main public comment period occurs once we release, once ODO staff releases its draft proposed order. Uh, that is, the draft proposed order is our recommended conclusions and findings on the application, and, and, uh, would include conditions of approval, um, if that's our direction. The public has a, uh, between thirty and forty-five days is typically the way the comment period would, would allow, um, to comment on our, on that document, as well as on the application itself. Um, so that, uh, the notice goes out by, we send out, uh, hard copy notices to neighboring landowners. Uh, I mean, that's a similar process to the local land use process, we have to send out physical notices. Uh, we send out emails to people who sign up for our mailing list, a lot of people have signed up to receive everything that EFC does, so we send out email notifications that way. We also publish in a local newspaper, an announcement, um, of the, uh, availability of the public comment period, so we will likely publish, uh, next Wednesday in the, uh, is it the Lakeview Examiner, is that the newspaper? Um, we'll publish in a newspaper.
That is our newspaper, paper of record, but we're such a large county with low population, we recommend for you to also use North Lake, which would be many breeze and desert whispers.
Yes, that's right, okay, I, I do, I was aware, thanks for the reminder that, um, we have been in contact with them, I have a, a support person who helps with that. I believe one of those papers publishes only on the first of the month, and so, I think on August first is when we will publish notice in, I can't remember which one of those only publishes once a month, but, um, uh, do that as well, yes, thank you. And that was a comment from the Obsidian Project that people made in North Lake County that said that the, uh, local newspapers were more important to them, uh, so we, we've taken that advice, and we will publish in those newspapers.
Thank you.
Does that answer the question on the public comment? And the process itself is typically, uh, written comments, um, you know, emails, letters back to us from the public. Um, we also hold, now, of course, COVID is throwing chaos to everything we do, uh, but on the draft proposal order for a new application, we are required to hold an in-person public hearing, uh, in the vicinity of the project. And so, this is what I also wanted to mention, not about the archway project, but about the Obsidian project, is next Monday, we will be holding that public hearing, uh, in Christmas Valley on the Obsidian project. We would have to hold a similar hearing on the archway project when that process that comes, uh, later, later in the process. So that's, and that's, that's the other opportunity for members of the public to come in person and, uh, speak directly to the, um, to the council, and we have an independent hearing officer from the Oregon Office of Administrative Hearings, an administrative law judge that administers that process as well.
Yeah, no, that, that answers my question on that, I, I do have another question, as far as, what, what does EFC consider substantial opposition? Um, I, if you were to build a four hundred megawatt solar plant in the valley or another, another county in western Oregon, uh, I would imagine the opposition that you would get would be far more in numbers than you would get in a rural county like this, where you have eight thousand square miles, less than eight thousand people, and it's seventy percent, uh, public lands. So, the amount of people that you're going to get, um, show up in opposition, um, is going to be substantially lower than anything that you would see in another part of Oregon typically, so I'm curious what you guys would consider a substantial opposition?
That's a good question, I, uh, I should qualify, I, one of the things I, I didn't go through in detail in my presentation was about the actual process itself. So to me, substantial opposition, uh, isn't about numbers, um, and in fact, we do our very best to, uh, you know, what we might call nimbyism, right, not my backyard, uh, people who simply don't like something because it's different, or they just, you know, don't like it for other reasons, um, we, we tend to not, um, that's not a legitimate part of our process, what is legitimate is the findings of fact have to be based off of rule and standards and statutes that guide our review process. We have a clearly defined regulatory review process, and so the opposition or, or support, uh, findings of compliance, um, need to be specific towards those standards and rules that apply to a facility. So if, for example, um, we have a standard around fish and wildlife habitat, we work closely with ODMW, John Murray, their district biologist, um, to support a finding, um, that a project meets our standard for, uh, wildlife, the threatened and endangered species, um, uh, and there's also a mitigation component to, to that, to that standard. Now, if a person was, uh, opposed to that specific component, they might say, I think you got it wrong, I think ODMW is wrong, I think you do not comply with the standard, something of that, and that's making that up. But something of that nature, where targeted towards the rule that applies towards that project. So it's not just a numbers game, uh, and in fact, we've had projects, not in your region, where we had, uh, uh, over a thousand, you know, all these kind of robo email comments that come in in opposition, and none of them were specific to, um, an actual applicable standard or law, and we just said, you know what, these comments, they don't like the project, but for no particular reason. And so they were not, um, there's really nothing you can do with those, you know, comments, if you want to say, I don't like this because no reason is given. Uh, it has to be specific towards the rule.
Okay, thank you, that, that very, that is very helpful, appreciate it.
You bet, yeah, and I, and I apologize for glossing over that component, I was trying to find the right level of information to share in this morning's presentation, but, um, the rule-based process is very important for us, and it has to be based in the rules that we've established.
Perfect, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, Max, I, I may be getting ahead of the ballgame here, but I'm gonna ask, um, for, for the SAG, for the special advisory group, for us, guidelines of, uh, our discussions with public and, uh, things, uh, as the board of commissioners and as our director, what are the guidelines of the do's and the don'ts as a special advisory group?
Yeah, that's a good question, you have, uh, you have a lot of discretion as to, um, how you discuss the project with your local constituents, um, and I'll, I'll give you a couple of examples of what I mean. Uh, ultimately, the comments that you give to us need to be from the county. Now, if you hear from your constituents, um, specific issues that you agree with and you support, and you want to adopt as your comments, you may do so, uh, and that, that of course is totally fine, uh, that we, we've had the county governments in the past, um, hold, even hold public hearings, simply, uh, on a particular project, take what they've heard from their own citizens and adopt them as their recommended, uh, statements back to us. Now, you could do that if you wish, um, your other alternative is simply amongst the members of the commission, with perhaps your staff, um, uh, perhaps more of a technical level review, uh, what I would mean by that is more of a strict land use or applicable code review criteria, kind of a yay-nay review, we have that as well. Um, so, I, I, I would, I would, I think you have options there. One other thing I would ask, though, if you do have citizens, uh, who are interested or concerned, uh, point them my way, you know, tell them getting tied to the VODO with the EFC Siting Division, and, uh, uh, let them speak to us directly, if they wish, I'm glad to, um, have those conversations with, with citizens as well.
Thank you.
Does that help answer the question?
That, that, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else from, any questions from this side? So we, thank you, Max, we'll move on to Laura now with, uh, Inenergy, is that correct?
Yes, great, thank you, thank you very much for the time, I appreciate it, I hope the audio's been okay, it seems like it's gotten better.
It, it did, it got a lot better, thank you very much.
Good, Max.
Great, great.
All right, Laura, are you on?
Uh, hey, I am, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, yep, we could go, go to the next slide. Is a little bit of overview of Inenergy, the company sponsoring this project, um. We are headquartered in Chicago, as I mentioned, I'm based in Portland, we also have a Western Regional office in Denver, Colorado, uh, where our VP of Western Development sits. Um, we're the largest privately held renewable energy developer and operator in the world, and, uh, most of our projects are in the US, but we do have projects in Europe, Japan, Mexico, other parts of Latin America. Going to the next slide, which highlights our solar experience. We, we got started in natural gas and moved into wind, and now we're in solar and storage. So this slide is a summary of our solar experience. Uh, most relevant to you, we've got, uh, two projects in construction outside of Primeville right now, these are in Cook County, uh, forty megawatt Primeville project, sixty megawatt Milliken solar project. On the sub-county land, it's private land, just, just outside of Primeville. Those two projects will be finished by the end of this year and start, start generating electricity next year through Pacificor to, to power Facebook's facility there, in Primeville. The next slide talks about our storage experience, uh, this particular slide, uh, the photo on this slide is from our Grand Ridge project in Illinois. These are what, um, battery storage containers look like, like, should be containers. We have, most of our projects so far are standalone storage, but we are looking at combining more and more of our storage projects with solar. The next slide is, is more details on, on archway in particular, the, the picture at the right is, is from a project of ours in, in New York, just meant to give you a little sense of, of the racking infrastructure and the, the modules that get placed on the, on the racks. Um, but the archway project, here are some key stats on the project. Uh, so it is four hundred megawatts, we've got a forty-three hundred acre site boundary, but within that, uh, the max impact would be thirty-six hundred acres, uh, probably a little less after we finish all of our engineering and design. We've got fourteen individual private landowners. Within five hundred feet is a boundary, half of which are participating in the project. And we've reached out to the others as well, um, about potentially participating in the project. We'll have up to five hundred in construction and four operations employees with this com- community benefits of, of the economic development during construction and operations, the lease payments to landowners, property tax revenue. And on the schedule, this follows uh what Max was saying earlier. We submitted the NOI in June. We expect to submit that application in October of this year. And it, it is a one-year timeline for EFSEC to deliver the site certificate that we could be getting that in October of twenty twenty-one. Another thing in the schedule, you know, we, Invenergy's an independent power producer, meaning we develop these projects, but we sell the electricity to a utility or other customer. And so while we work through the development process, we're also responding to Pacificor's RFPs and other, others. Uh, they've got an RFP out right now. They expect to issue a shortlist in October of this year. So that's gonna drive some of our development decisions. If we, if we weren't to make that shortlist, we may slow down development of this project. If we do make the shortlist, then we continue on the schedule. That would be working towards getting a power purchase agreement with them by November of twenty twenty-one. And then starting construction by October of twenty twenty-two. And complete construction by end of twenty twenty-three and start operations beginning of twenty twenty-four. And that, that construction schedule is a little driven off of federal tax credits. Um, and maximizing the, the economics of the project when so- solar modules and, and construction costs at the lowest and tax credits are, are the highest. This is a quick overview, but turn it back to you if you have questions. The next slide is, is a facility layout. Um, it's a preliminary layout. And we'll have more, a more detailed layout in the, in the application itself.
Yes, Laura, Brad, once again, I, I do have a question, uh, looked at your schedule here. I, I guess I'll just ask it straight up. I don't see no schedule to uh negotiate with the county or what you have proposed for taxation on this development.
Sure. If, uh, glad to do that anytime you're, you're ready. Uh, do, do you have a preference for, for when that would come in the process?
Well, um, as we were going through the previous one and during the meeting as the Special Advisory Group, we sort of have, I'll say, some surprises. So I guess from, from Inven- Inven- how do you say it? Invenergy, um, I guess, proposal, what you guys are looking at on taxation, we have things in place um for solar taxation. Uh, with Obsidian, we uh went into a SIP agreement. There's several different things that we could talk about, but I would say for your financial part of it, you would want to know what your finan- or what your tax structure is going to be over the next years, once you give it to operations. And we definitely are interested, as my fellow commissioner says, we're seventy-eight percent publicly owned. So our tax, taxation for uh operations here uh is important to us.
Sure, of course, glad, glad you brought it up and would be glad to, to work on that with you uh sooner than later. As you said, that, that it is useful information for us, us to know going into our economics.
Yeah.
Uh, as, as for you.
Yes, you, you've done projects in Oregon, correct?
Correct.
And uh, anything of this scale on the solar side?
Uh, just up to a hundred megawatts, so a quarter of this.
So it, so the, the taxation or the SIP or other things might be um what you have not dealt with unless you've done that on the wind energy side.
Right, we, in Cook County has a rural renewable energy development zone. And so we got a, an agreement with the county under that authorization.
Yeah.
We do have a, we have a SIP agreement, we have a wind project in, uh, near Boardman. And we do have a SIP agreement in place for that project.
Okay, so anyways, find it to see. Now, now you'll do some research and get ahold of us on that.
Apprec- appreciate that, yeah, just logistically, who, should, should I work with? You, Darwin, on that, or who should I work with?
Well, on the, let's uh, whatever direction you'd like to go, let's get ahold of the Board of Commissioners through Melanie Buzini.
Okay.
Start with, then we'll bring our team together, our assessor, our treasurer, our budget person and, and others that we feel necessary to review and be part of that process.
Okay. Sounds good. Mel- Melanie, is it possible to get a copy of Obsidian's SIP agreement?
Absolutely.
That would be great. It's uh, that would be helpful. And just, just while I have you, is that, do you think that's a good starting point for us? Or there are changes you, you'd like to see in the next one?
So I, I think, state politically, I think there's room for negotiations on whatever direction you guys might go. We, we, we are a enterprise, a renewable ener- energy enterprise zone here, so that qualifies for probably a few different things. You may understand that more than even I do, Laura, so.
Okay, yep, glad to, that, that's really helpful, glad to.
Yeah, but we, we.
Chat about that next.
We would be fine if you just wanted to pay the per megawatt, seven thousand dollars per megawatt. We, we'd be fine with that.
You, you would take that, that would be all right?
So.
That, that's easy, that's an easy calculation.
Yeah, it works well for us. So anyways, um, I, I don't need to get down the weeds too much further, but I think you will have internal discussion, then you'll get ahold of us and we can have some.
Okay.
Some total discussion.
That's, that's good.
Um, and I'm going to, I'm taking up all the time. My fellow commissioner probably asked a question, but um, I'm going to deviate just a little bit. You mentioned that you guys, um, are you still doing any natural gas?
We are, we, we have one operating natural gas project in the Northwest. It's up in Grace Harbor County, Washington.
I've.
We.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, we, we don't have any other development projects in the Northwest right now. We do, we, we do in other parts of the country. Uh, we just finished a project down east, and we have one down in Texas. Uh, no, no current plans for gas in, in Oregon.
Yeah, so you, you probably don't get into the utility side of natural gas rather than as the operating pipeline.
Right, you mean the, the pipeline, natural gas pipeline, or just from?
What we have here, I'll just cut to the chase. What we have is natural gas to the one side of Lakeview. We'd like to get it to our other industrial site. We're trying to find uh the best way to do that. I've been working with some, some other people, but you said natural gas would trigger my thoughts.
Uh-huh, gotcha. Yeah, glad to, to look into that as well.
Yeah, we might, you might get ahold of me on the side. We might have a little bit of discussion because it probably doesn't fit for development the way you guys are. But it might.
Okay.
Other questions from the board or from Darwin?
No, I, I have no questions at this point in time. But looking forward to some future discussions, this is, uh, we go ahead with this, so.
And, and we're, as we get through the COVID, we're looking forward to meeting in person, so, right? Very much so, to meet with people, so.
Likewise, yeah, it's strange being a developer and stuck here in my house in Portland. So, uh, looking forward to getting out there, out there soon.
All right. Uh, any follow-up thoughts or questions from anybody? All right, Max, Laura, thank you both very much.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity. We'll be in touch, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right.
All right, with that, uh, do we need to take a short break? People need a break. All right, so we're gonna take a break, come back at ten thirty. Here we go, Darwin.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's a lot of work for you.
Uh, you know it is, but this is, you know, our second, kind of third time through it, so. A lot of the same stuff that they'll be asking for, already sending stuff that we, we haven't changed about the, the rules ourselves, so. The state's top rule sort of changed, so, but they're working back, so.
Do we need tomorrow to officially designate you?
Yeah, whatever the letter, I didn't, I didn't get that from him exactly how that letter gets written up and sent to them to the.
Oh, send it next week, he said.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was that, but.
Maybe we could just do it.
Yeah, because it's not till Friday of next week that it happens. But yeah, as long as it's prepared by.
Well, the board, the board tomorrow could make you the.
Yeah, you can do it by, yeah, I would, that's probably a good idea, just in your meeting to, and then prepare the letter after that, yeah. That's, that's a great idea to add to your agenda tomorrow. But, yeah.
Um, and as we've marked, Darwin, I don't know if even today's time for a birthday.
Yeah, I think it is. And so we had the discussion about this before, about.
Department of Date.
So I got a road naming application for um off of cracking the ground road over to uh Christmas Tree Road. Um, it's, it's the east-west road. Uh, it, it's a Pinto's thing, it's a plan, but it has more than three addresses on it. It's probably somewhere near ten. But because of the numbering system, some folks have come off cracking ground, some have come off Christmas Tree, even though they're on the real east and west road. Um, so now I've got somebody that's in between two addresses. I don't have enough for them, so they, they've made this application. I will need to bring it before you guys, or go over naming and little addressing ordinance. Um, and then I'm hoping to do that, probably your second meeting in August. I'm gonna need some time to prepare notices, the questionnaire that goes out to adjacent owners, and let, you know, give her a bit of heads up that we're gonna be um naming another road out there. If you were to look on Google Earth, um, it would, it says half-mile road. There's nobody actually on that. Um, I'm not sure where Google Earth comes up with some of their names that end up on, on the layers.
Your guesses is good as ours.
So we, we, we've been in commission with many people, so we, Google Earth, Google Earth says it's lost. I'm sorry, I couldn't get that spit out.
It's not, but, so I, I would like to, you know, I'll, I'll look at the maps and see what, what, uh, you know, would be the recommendation I think we should name it. Um, you know, this is a, is a hot topic uh for me as an address manager because, you know, it puts us in an interesting timeline when people are applying for land use or building permits and then, oh, now we gotta name our.
Right, but up until that one, where are we going?
Two, two hour forty minutes.
And we're asked what our entry is going to be.
Yeah, we're gonna complain.
Should we bring another?
Well, you know, we've never been asked, uh, to ask these questions before. And so now we have, for, uh, been asked some of these questions, so. And, and I, I know that individually Dustin's always been open, um, a- as well as Dennis, has been open to us, uh, having these discussions with them individually. But here we are to answer these questions as a board, and I wanted to make sure that it was on everyone's radar. It's unfortunate that Commissioner Albersen isn't here, but um I forwarded on to him as well and asked if he would like to present any comments.
So, um, just going down through here, I just thought I'd go ahead and sort of mark some things. Fast is for discussion. And remember, when I rate, good means you're doing a darn good job. That's just, you know, the way I do. So just quickly going over this timeliness, um, I would, if you're gonna do the survey, give you my views and you could need to take one of them. Been very good, as far as I'm good, uh, as far as I'm concerned. Accuracy, that one there, I don't know if that's something that we can really, really say. How do you rate the ability of Ori- Department of Forestry to provide service correctly the first time? That, without.
That's a really, that one.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't, I guess I would respond is, is that's an internal internal obligation to know, know that or, or whatever. So I, I left out and blanked. Uh, helpfulness has been good, expertise has, uh, they've been excellent as far as I'm concerned, um, especially forest management and everything, um, fires and so. Availability of information's been good and overall service has been good. And that's sort of where I came out and just being brought it up at a glance. Um, if you'd like to do the survey, I'd like to give you that. And if yours aren't the same, that's fine, but.
They're the same. Beyond the same.
Are they, really?
Yeah, about the same. Okay, I just, uh, I, I suppose it's just strange for us as a governmental body to be asked, especially questions relating to the expertise of the Oregon Department of Forestry employees, um, to give comment on our opinion of how, of their employees' performance. Which just seemed a little bit strange to me.
Yes, especially when we only deal with a certain segment of their employees.
Okay, so this, this leads me to one of my questions. Is, has this ever happened before? Have we ever been asked these questions before in a survey, to your knowledge? Have you been here?
Probably, probably.
Okay.
I, I think all of that, the survey is, is an overall view of Ori- Department of Forestry and, and the public relations, I guess. I haven't read the cover, but, um, it is. Wonder if we have a survey, send out a survey about what people think about commissioners.
And uh, you might wanna present some more options here.
Yeah. So, um, I can't answer your question.
Okay.
For sure, but I believe, yes, there has been. And I believe, I believe Mr. Schallman will be able to answer most of those questions with his expertise on fire and everything. But I, uh, that's off, off my head. But I'm comfortable with, with that. The, the state forestry has been good to work with over the years, um, on many, many fronts.
Yeah, well, they, they've des- they've definitely helped us out with the RFPA's and the assistance that we've had from them, it's been great, cooperation. Yeah, so I just, uh, I was curious what my board thought about it, so.
Yeah. Um, next, or is that, are you good on that?
What's, what's next for us?
Next is petition for order, does a daily newspaper. This is something that we do yearly. Um, Mr. Bailey is, is part of it. Uh, tomorrow, we can do the order, does name of the newspaper.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Do we have a newspaper that we are considering? Or is that something to be discussed tomorrow? Because that's never mentioned in the letter.
It's uh, did I ever read that? It's always been Lake County Examiner as the established, uh, right? That goes countywide.
Right.
I'll be darned, isn't it in the place, say, Lake County Examiner? Oh, here it is. Now, there, therefore it is ordered, Lake County Examiner, it is made the newspaper in which says, "Lake County Proposal List Shall Be Published."
Okay, sounds good. It, it did not say that in the letter that Jim Bailey had signed.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, and I believe, um, I believe that it's been recommended. I believe that it's been a recommendation always is that has to do with that newspaper to meet all compliance, but we recommend for it also with another two papers.
Right.
And I believe it does with whispers, that I've seen it in there, I can't say on the community press.
Got it.
So. All right, what are, what are we missing?
I just have a quick days on the table.
All right, I can turn it over here. Um, well, uh, we have continued COVID nineteen declaration emergency discussion, uh, we carried that forward, James, uh, thank you for bringing that forward last meeting.
Yeah.
And, um, especially with, uh. The turnover events on COVID nineteen, I would say that we stay with our emergency declaration at this point.
Yep.
And I think it's good to keep this on every one of our agents, to look at that, to check some balance.
Just, just to bring it back forward again, we reevaluate what our actual status is, so, yeah.
And I, I, I do wanna make a comment about COVID nineteen, and, um, that's very positive, uh. I've seen our community in support of our businesses and wearing the masks and going into businesses. And, and I commend our citizens, our constituents, for being considerate of those businesses, because those businesses are the ones that will end up with a fine or be in trouble. It's not the individuals that's not wearing the mask, and so I, I've really seen some very respectful people. And citizens do the respectful and right thing for our businesses, you know, that's, that's always very encouraging, uh, Lake County people, so. I just wanted to mention that out there, and, you know, I know there's a lot of. Everybody's at their wit's ends with COVID nineteen, we can throw ourselves into that, it's a lot of stress, but. When you see the citizens helping out our businesses, it's greatly appreciated, so. Would you not expect a positive comment?
No. So I, I, I never, I never know these days.
You, you don't.
Quite honestly, I, I've, I've reached a breaking point numerous times in the last three months, and last five to six months, honestly.
Yeah, but. And I guess that's probably a statement, and during these trying times, it's hard on everybody, so anyways, uh. Uh, we have ladies on the table.
Oh, um, so. Uh, Kevin Hawk, of course, joined us this morning to give us a, a, a brief update and just kind of, uh. Uh, overview of the rebuilds for the graders, but he had, we and, me and him were going to talk about a few other things, but he had to run. This morning because he is dealing with an issue that is on all of our radar, which is, uh, water on the roads. Um, and when you're out there paving, and you're, you're, all your guys are out there working, and you spend all that time prepping, and then you. You get out there and you pave it, and then somebody's end cannon comes on on a pivot and shoots water all over those roads and washes a whole section of oil away. It costs us thousands, tens of thousands of dollars, you're having guys standing out there, you're having a road superintendent get up on top of this truck. Wrapped in a sandbag around, uh, the top of a pivot to try and stop the end cannon from destroying our roads. Uh, needless to say, even when the road is done drying, the oil is finished, setting, um, the water still erodes the highways. It's not, we have an ordinance that dates way back, and it's in the paper every single year. And I think I want to just bring everyone's attention to it because, um, and I'm gonna continue to push this in the public because it is a county concern, and it says it directly in the ordinance. Previous boards found that it did, um, it seriously impacted us. And we have other ordinances that, um, you know, it's difficult for us to enforce, although in the last couple of months, we've had several people. Who have received tickets and been cited for barking dogs. But we have county employees that are taking time off from work. From the, from our departments to come back in and deal with those cases because their dog was barking. Meanwhile, it's costing our own road department tens of thousands of dollars to manage, uh, a road project. Because someone's engine came on, and, I mean, these days, we have the technology where you can get an app on your phone, and you can turn an engine off. And I've seen people do that with their own pivots just to avoid hitting their house, but they'll have a pivot come straight up to the end of the road, and that water will be spreading across our road constantly. I've driven with Kevin on the north end of our county and on the south end, where we've driven along a county highway. Paved highway that we've spent a huge amount of dollars on, and we, we stopped in the lane, and our truck is being, we're absolutely covered with water. Because the engine cannon is just sitting there pumping water onto our highway, um.
On Sunday, I went to Fort Rock, and I was able to have my car washed.
Right, you got the Lake County Car Wash, did you?
You got, you got the Lake County Car Wash just up there, um, in between, uh, eleven mile corner and Fort Rock, um. While you, while you sort of skimmed over there, sir, uh, it is an enforcement issue.
I, I, I did, and, and I guess that's kinda where I'm going, I'd like to go back to having. Us taking enforcement seriously on this matter and engaging with our public, and I think a, a number of people simply don't take it seriously. And when you get, you have some people over here on this side that really try very hard to work with our road superintendent. Making sure the cows are off the road, making sure that there's no water on the road, they're doing everything they possibly can, even if it does happen once or twice, a cow gets out or whatever. They're absolute, they're Johnny on the spot trying to get there and fix the problem.
They appreciate the road.
And absolutely, because the road is their tax dollars put to work, and when we have other landowners, we simply don't care. And we're, here we are today discussing a, a drought declaration. That was recommended to us, that recommended that we declare by landowners and property owners, and then we have other landowners that are wasting water. Shooting them on our roads and degrading their, their life, so.
So, a couple of things.
A lot of things going on there.
Couple of things you missed because of, um, this isn't my first rainstorm.
Oh, yeah, you're mine.
Um, is the shoulders, the deterioration of the shoulder.
Right.
And then we have had one, if not more, gravel road that was completely destroyed. Paving is where a huge cost bill was for is oil deterioration, whenever you have gravel road that continues and it turns, it, it just basically. I think Kevin probably told me this, because he's been to one of them, and it washes your, your fines away, if you have, have nothing. Your comparison of, um, I've heard of a couple of, uh, enforcement of barking dogs. But there hasn't been no enforcement of our infrastructure being destroyed, that's, it's been a challenge for a lot of years, and I commend you for bringing this forward. Because of, um, some people don't wanna hear it, but it's real, it's a real cost.
Yeah.
And so you have my support if we need to shore some things up. Where we'd like to go with this? Absolutely, a- and I, I'm not kidding, there, there wasn't a little bit of water up there, this was a full gun going all the way. Closeside to the road.
Right, so were you out there yesterday?
On Sunday.
A Sunday, yeah.
Yeah, so, then you know exactly which pivot I'm talking about.
Right, and I guess I just want, I would like to see some of the constituents or those, and some of the property owners, it's only a few, but. Take ownership and take responsibility for the fact that these are your roads. These are our roads, all of us, and.
And it's costing us. Sit the wall.
Right, we have an ordinance in place, it's been there for a long time, I think we're past the point that anyone can say that they were unaware of it. So, I think that we just need to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start beating this drum, because I think that our road superintendent really needs our support. And I think that we need to, uh, or I'm, I'm just gonna be moving forward with this, and I wanna give my board full notice that, uh. And, and if there are any issues or anyone that comes forward and they're, they're not happy about it, I just wanna give everyone a heads up.
Um.
This will be a discussion that will be, I don't.
You're probably gonna get crucified on this one, I'm gonna go ahead, but in, in part of our county that has more torrential water. And with, um, water rights what they are. I'm sure the water master probably invested if the water is not going on, they're designated water rights.
Yeah, you're probably gonna get crucified for that one, so.
But, but, but you know, I, I believe over the years, um, the water master has been involved a time or two in everything, uh.
Right.
But it.
And the water master is involved in this one, Brian actually reached out to me last week, and he said he'd like to have a conversation about this because. Um, he, he journeyed out there with Kevin, I guess, last week, because we had this scenario happen. On a road that we are currently working on and getting finished up, um, the water master went out there and was supporting Kevin. Trying to make sure that he had what he needed from the state management side of things, but I think, being that this is our ordinance. We need to make sure that we're at the table too on it, but the water master is aware of the situation, and he knows that I'm, I'm gonna be making noise on this issue.
So I, I would like to also mention, but you did, it is most, every farmer and rancher is very considerate and takes care of. And appreciates having their water, and they put it on their crawl, right, it's just confusing to most of us, it's. Quite certain few. Don't take care of business, and it's, it's.
Well, yeah, and it gets into, you know, a lot of those other issues too, where, you know, yeah, we have these ditches, where we have a lot of vegetation overgrown and everything, you know, and I think. Some of the landowners would like to see us, you know, tend to a lot of those ditches and expend the dollars to come in and trim the grass and cut it and everything else. Because it's grown really high, but at the same time, the reason it's high, I mean, we live in a desert. We, we live at forty-five hundred feet above sea level, and, and it is a high desert, the only reason there's grass. Like, you know, that's six foot tall, growing in the ditches is because someone's throwing water on it, and rather than on their own field, and so there's water getting into the road right, right away. That there's no way for us to control, even if we put poison on it really, because you're just pounding it with additional water, and so the vegetation is growing up. If we wanna decrease the vegetation in our ditches in the right of way. Stop shooting water on it and focus the water on property that you actually have water on. So, just. That, that's part of the conversation that I think is gonna need to be had, I think, as we kind of move forward with this, because it's. It's reached a point that I think our, our road superintendent is extremely frustrated.
He's, he's reached an offer, so.
Yes, and I think we just need to be there for him.
Agreed, agreed, other updates?
So, I was in Silver Lake last night for the fire, um, department, uh, meeting, their board met. Uh, Silver Lake received their first check from Christmas Valley Fire Department, basically, that was their share of the motel tax dollars. Um, and the, Chris Valley for years has received those dollars coming from the motels in Silver Lake, Summer Lake, and, and the north, that, that, uh, northwestern side. Um, but, uh, they received a letter with Ann, who, from Ann, who gave a breakdown of what the allocation would technically be. Depending on the tax owners that were coming in from those two motels, and she, uh, so, and, and, uh, this is Eddie and him. Broke that down, and then they issued a check to the Silver Lake Fire Department, I think what they're looking at is they're probably going to be putting that money aside, because they've gone twenty-six years without that money. Um, they're, they're, and they're really proud about that, I think they're gonna try and put some of that money aside to, for replacement ambulance at some point. Uh, but, uh, they're just really appreciative of support from the commissioners on that and trying to get, and getting them to that point. And, uh, I'm really proud of them for working so closely with Christmas Valley to kind of get to this mutual agreement. Um, of what works best for them, I think, uh, Silver Lake would still like to see an ordinance change. Um, and so that's something that we'll have to discuss going forward.
Yeah, well, I, um, I think they know the potential challenges that they're going on.
They are fully, fully aware of the challenges on that.
Don't know, or. Ordinance, I'm very proud of them to come to agreement between the two taxing districts, yeah, and do that, that is, uh, that is very good. If you have quite a bit of play in that, thank you, because I know I am working on that too, but, um, that is, um, I believe.
It's been a long process, and I think it's, I think it's about nineteen hundred dollars per quarter. That will be going to the Silver Lake Fire Department now, where, as before, they weren't getting that.
Yeah, well, and when, when we get through COVID, people, the motels may be more, may be less, people are going rural areas to get away, right? So motel tax may stay okay, I'm not sure.
But I, it is very important to help out our rural, uh, EMS groups and stuff, most issues, so. It's, it's been, it's a really big deal, and there was a, it means a lot to them.
Okay, so, um. May eggs on the pigs for me, um, we will have another fair board meeting, I believe it's the twentieth. Their decisions will be forthcoming at that time, uh, as far as the fair board goes. Uh, as we had our partners meeting, you were in that one, James, um, but our partners meeting with the cell committee is a four-H extension. The roundup, the fair board themselves, it takes everything, put this on, um, the four-H FFA extension. For risk management and for purposes related to insurance and risk, they decided to have that was be judged virtually. But by, uh, by doing a video of each one for ninety seconds, they haven't finalized all that. Um, but obviously with that said, that, that has a lot to do with the fair itself, uh, new guidelines have come out today. Um, not, not where I can say one way or the other on any of it, but, um, each group is looking and, and working on what the risk. Assessment is, and what the venue could or could not be, but, uh, there'll be, we, we owe the citizens and everybody a decision. And so we put that date out for the twentieth to be able to bring everything in, so.
So it's next Monday.
Um, I, I hope, I hope I have the day right.
I think so.
I believe the roundup and the desert cruisers are meeting on the sixteenth, that's on Thursday.
Yeah, and, um, yeah, I have fair board at twenty, evening of the, the twentieth, and they got pushed out waiting for the roundup to build it. Make their decisions up there.
Okay.
So, um, I still have, uh, the project out at the fairgrounds, um, COVID has slowed me way down, the project should have been in the ground. All the, and thank you to the board of commissioners and the others, the, uh, the purchase of the pipe, the stand pipes. It's all been done locally through ACE, it was staged out at building two, ready, put backloads in the ground and start digging for the water lines. So, um, we're just a little bit, uh, later in the summer than I anticipated, so.
Okay, when are you planning on actually breaking ground?
Uh.
Okay.
Well.
Whenever, you just named the date, you know, I'll be there.
I think, I think, uh, I think it's gonna be, uh, the first part of August, this bottom of the shoot. Um, July is, is sort of almost got away, even though today's only the fourteenth, it just seems like there's more and more meetings and things.
Right.
All the time, so, I'm on shoot for August at this point.
Okay.
So, um, sooner if we can, um.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, so, I know that's probably, um, the, the fair, fair, fairgrounds, fair board and everything is on everybody's mind right now, so. Other than that, um, I don't have any other updates at this time.
Oh, yeah, I don't have anything, Junior Rodeo on page, it was really good.
That was, um, it was Sunday.
Sunday.
Yeah, because when I drove through, and I've been to Fort Rock before, went through Christmas Valley, but I was amazed at how many vehicles were there.
Hmm, and very good turnout.
Sounds like it was a good turnout.
Yeah.
I know the, the horse show was, uh, Horse Association put on a horse show here two weeks ago, had a good turnout. People adhered to their rules, it was very successful as far as I'm concerned, that's good to hear, Paisley's was good too.
Yeah, very good.
All right, um, so tomorrow we, uh, have a regular session, ten o'clock, uh, should be relatively fast. Legal counsel has some legal updates, are we calling him at a certain time or anything, Mel?
Yeah.
Okay, so what time are we calling him?
At the end of our meeting. At the end of our meeting.
At the end of it, okay, he's available, alright, with that, we will adjourn at ten minutes after the light. Danielle, thank you for being.